To call the meeting to order and please stand with me to do the flag salute. And Commissioner Wyler will lead us.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Welcome, Barry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbe.
Present.
Commissioner Paul. Commissioner Barber.
Here.
Commissioner Makaro.
Present.
Mr. Spear.
Present.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Thank you. Now to review the minutes from the last meeting, are there any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes as written? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
I second the motion. Roll call, please.
Chair Barbe.
Approved.
Commissioner Barber.
Approve.
Commissioner Makaro.
Approve.
Commissioner Spear.
Approve.
Commissioner Wyler.
Yes, approve.
The vote is five to oh to approve.
Thank you, Alex. Written communications, Mr. Finestone.
Hi, thank you Chair Barbe. We did receive a few pieces of written communication. They are specific to the conditional use permit, the public hearing item, item number two on the agenda for tonight's meeting. So they will be written, read into the record at that time when public comments are made. And we have also placed copies of those on the dais. Other written communication has been provided to you that was received over the course of the last several days. So you have that and we're provided with that prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Oral communications? I don't think so. No. All right, our first public hearing. Just for everyone's edification here, what I'll do is I'll name it. I'll ask the commissioners if there's any conflict of interest or disclosures to make. The staff will present on the project. Commissioners will then ask staff for any questions, particularly with respect to clarification, clarifying what has been presented. Then we will open the public hearing for comment with three minutes for each person who wants, who wishes to speak. We'll also hear the written, written communications to be read into the record on this item. And then we'll close the public hearing. The commissioners will then discuss and deliberate and then we'll act, we'll pass a motion. So this is for a conditional use permit and grading exemption, PHG 20-0033 slash PL 22-0216. So are there any disclosures from commissioners on this? Seeing none? Okay, let's move to staff presentation. Ivan?
Thank you Commissioner Barbe. My name's Ivan Flores and I'm an associate planner with the planning division. And I will be presenting on PHG 20-0033 and PL 22-0216, which as you stated is a conditional use permit and grading exemption. The conditional use permit will be to operate an assisted living facility, but also known in our zoning code as a licensed residential care facility. The facility will be comprised of three buildings and within an existing building on site. And the grading exemption is to allow fill slopes up to 10 feet within 50 feet of our property line and to construct a one and a half to one cut slope. The subject property is located in the estate to general plan land use designation. This land use designation is to support semi-rural residential uses with a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. The property is located within the RE 20 zoning district with a 20,000 square feet lot size minimum. The assisted living facility is a conditionally permitted use within the RE 20 zoning district if you are going to be providing care for seven or more residences. The size of the parcel is approximately 4.27 acres in size. Commissioner Barber did want to note how much of the development will be happening on this site as it pertains to this project. And the applicant will be disturbing about 2.45 acres of the 4.27. It's primarily surrounded by residential uses to the south, east and west with a middle school to the north, which I believe is Hidden Valley Middle School. The site was previously used as a borrowed site for residential development in that area. So they were taking dirt from that site and using it for development in the surrounding Staff would like to make a point of clarification on this, on this plan. So the staff report notes that the construction would be approximately 20,190 square feet. After staff reviewed subsequent plans, it came, we came to notice that the actual square footage of the project will be 20,233 square feet and just want to correct it for the record. So the total building square footage is, including the existing building, will be So each building is approximately 6,700 square feet. The parking lot will occupy 9,415 square feet and will be able to accommodate 25 spaces. 18 spaces are required for this type of use and that's dependent on the number of beds that they have on site. And this includes the beds in the existing facility. Parking will be sited near the new construction, so it's anticipated that most of the traffic going to the site will be accessed from Wedgewood Avenue. The property is considered a through lot, so it means it's located on, you know, Wedgewood and Reed Road, so it doesn't have a rear yard setback requirement. It would be a front yard setback off of Wedgewood Avenue. Another question that Commissioner Barber brought to staff's intention was how much of the lot will be covered in structure and that'll be about 16%. The underlying zoning designation allows for 30% lot coverage and a maximum floor area ratio of .4. So the proposed project would be well under that. The buildings are sited around a central courtyard and the design of the buildings themselves, as it pertains to location, is really meant to screen onsite activity and to serve as a natural screen to the, to the off-street parking and to the cut slopes that are subject to the grading exemption. As stated earlier, the project does require a grading exemption due to the one and a half to one cut slope rate that's being proposed at the, as shown here on this, on the plan, which is the red area. Typically, we only allow a two to one cut, cut slope, but a grading exemption would allow for them to construct a one and a half to one as long as they provide support for that through a soils memo showing, showing that the slope would be stable and as long as they include those recommendations from the soils report into their grading design. The other aspect to the grading exemption is the fill slopes. So typically, you're limited up to five feet within 50 feet of our property line, but in some areas they're proposing it to go up to 10 feet. Typically, that includes the retaining wall design, so you would measure it from the top of footing from the retaining wall all the way to the highest point of the retaining wall and you would include that in the, in the slope height. The reason for the grading exemption was due to the change in elevation. So as, in existing conditions, as you move from north to south, there's about a 25-foot drop. And as you move from east to west, there's about a 14-foot change in elevation as you move in that direction. So the, the applicant really needed to consider an aggressive grading design as it pertains to the project due to the changes, changes in elevation. The applicant did consider alternative designs such as a terrace design and a single flat grade design. However, both designs would have led to either unusable area and given that the users of the site would, you know, it's served, it's meant to serve people who live with dementia. And so those alternatives really didn't, wouldn't be able to serve the users of the site. And so this is what they ended up coming out with and proposing. Another concern that Commissioner Barber brought up was the retaining wall, which would be affecting the, the westerly property line. So as you can see in this field exhibit, there is a approximately five-foot retaining wall from finished grade. Adjacent to that, it's, you know, unfortunately not shown here, but there is an existing six-foot, what we would, what appears to be a six-foot wood fence. And so the property owner to the west would not necessarily be looking at a five-foot retaining wall. They would be looking at probably two or three feet, you know, at the highest point. The applicant is proposing landscaping in that area between, as you can see here, there's a smaller retaining wall and then a taller retaining wall. In that area, they're proposing landscaping to kind of soften the appearance of the wall itself. We do include a conditional approval requiring the retaining walls that are facing any adjacent properties to be constructed of decorative material, so that could be split face or any other alternative that the applicant would like to propose. And throughout the property, the retaining walls range from about three feet to six feet in height, but they don't exceed that. And this is an example of what the applicant could propose. We usually require building, you know, and this is obviously not what they're proposing, it's just an example of something that they could propose. So this is the single-story version of the building. And as shown on the site plan, there are two single-story versions and a one-two-story version. The two-story version, and I should have indicated earlier, is located further away from the property lines and further away from the street. With the single-story versions kind of fronting Wedgewood and the property to the east. The single-story version is approximately 19 feet in height up to the tallest point, which would be consistent with the underlying zoning district. They're proposing stucco with varying finishes. And it, it's really meant to maintain a residential appearance of, as opposed to an institutionalized appearance of, you know, this type, for this type of use. And so this is the, the top is the front elevation, which would be facing the courtyard. And then the rear elevation would be facing either Wedgewood or the property line to I do want to note, just for the planning commission, that there are colored elevations on page 39 of the staff report of the agenda. Here is another elevation for the single stories. The top one shows the left side and the bottom one shows the right side. This is the elevation for the second story. At its highest point, it would be about approximately 24 feet in height, which is still consistent with the underlying zoning district. You know, as you can see, they're providing varying roof lines to break up the massing of the building. Design's consistent with the single-story version. As you can see here, they're providing a variety of window shapes and sizes to provide that additional architectural articulation. This is the left and right side of the two-story elevation. And one thing to note, these, where you see the trellis-like structures, those are patio areas for the, for the residences. And here is the landscape plan. Another commission, another concern that Commissioner Barber brought up was the existing California pepper tree, which you can see right here in the middle of the driveway towards the, the west, westerly property line. So this area. Unfortunately, it would be difficult to retain that California pepper tree just because of its location. The site is already pretty constricted in terms of how, how far they can move the buildings and the driveway. But because of this, they are required to replace the mature trees at a one-to-one ratio. And I believe they are proposing seven California pepper trees on site to meet that requirement. They're proposing a total of 72 trees and they offer various landscaped areas, as you can see here, with a central courtyard. Approximately 6,304 square feet of the lot will be landscaped. And it's really heavily landscaped to screen onsite uses and retaining walls adjacent to property lines. As I mentioned earlier, the retain, the section that is affected by the fill slope will be landscaped and they will specifically plant dwarf strawberry trees to soften the, the look of the retaining wall at that, in that area. City staff received a total of three comments on the project. The comments had the following concerns. Traffic generation from the project and throughout the project site. For example, one of the concerns was whether or not that driveway would be, you know, through access from Reed Road to Wedgewood by the public. It's meant to service this property and so it would seem that, you know, whatever the property owner does to secure the site should prevent that. Adequacy of sewer capacity, land use compatibility and impact on property values. You know, as stated earlier, the project is subject to conditional use permit, so that the planning commission may, you know, through this process, attach conditions that would allow it to function in harmony with the surrounding land uses and try to prevent any detrimental impacts to surrounding properties, surrounding uses. As it pertains to sewer, sequo, staff recommends the filing of a notice of exemption and this is discussed in the staff report. The project is categorically exempt under the sequel guidelines, section 15532, which pertains to infill development. The project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies as discussed in the staff report. The proposed development incurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres. The project site has no value habitat for endangered, rare, threatened species. An approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, work, water quality. And the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. An additional concern that was brought up by a neighbor was the oak tree that saddles the property line to the east. And so after internal discussion, staff did draft a condition of approval to be added to the resolution, which is read here. Prior to issuance of a grading permit, the applicant shall retain an arborist to evaluate impacts, if any, to the oak tree adjacent to the project site. The applicant will be responsible for incorporating any recommendations from the arborist report into the grading plans in order to avoid adversely impacting said tree. And I did discuss this with the applicant and they're in agreement with this condition of approval on the project. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution number 2023-08 approving PHG 20-0033 and PL 22-0216. That'll conclude staff's presentation and the applicant and the owner and, the owner, the architect and I believe the engineer are here for any questions. And staff is available. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation, very thorough. First questions for clarification from the commissioners?
Ivan. So first of all, thank you for answering questions that I had in advance. I've got two more questions. This is a well-established neighborhood and when you visit this neighborhood, there's a lot of pride of ownership in these homes. I want to make sure the introduction of what I consider a commercial enterprise into a residential neighborhood is effectively screened from the neighboring properties. So do we know exactly what kind of landscaping they plan to incorporate in the southern end of the property that would screen the facilities from Wedgewood?
It looks like a variety of trees adjacent to Wedg, the Wedgewood Avenue area. It's also important to note that they are raising the site as a part of the, the project and so that should serve as a, in addition to the landscaping and the retaining walls, should, should serve as a, a natural screening effect on the project itself.
What do we anticipate as being the volume of traffic that this project is going to generate?
I'll defer that to Mr. Christman, who's our principal engineer.
Thanks Ivan. So part of what the applicant needed to do, as far as our review of the project, they submitted a scoping agreement to us that generated a, an amount of traffic that is anticipated from this project based on the use. It would generate about 120 trips daily. And as part of our scoping agreement and the worksheet that they filled out, there, there are certain thresholds in, within the worksheet and the, the threshold that we look for that we would consider as significant impact is 200 vehicle trips per day. So this project generated only 100, well, not only, but 120 vehicle trips per day.
But when you break that down, okay, so obviously you're considering visitors to the people who are residents there and employees. Are you also considering, again, since this is basically a commercial enterprise, the delivery of supplies, ongoing maintenance, city services that would be provided? Is that included in the calculation?
It is, you know, the calculation is done based on the use. So as a care facility, basically the calculation is taking a two and a half trips per bedroom, so 45 proposed units times the 2.5 gives you close to the 120 trips per day.
Okay, so it's regarding, it's calculating visits more than it is delivery of supplies, et cetera?
Yeah, it's a regional number, so, you know, I, I think it would include some of those items, but.
Now, did you have a point?
Maybe I could provide a little bit more detail also. So Sandag has established trip generation numbers based on types, different types of uses. For instance, a single-family home is anticipated to generate 10 trips a day. A trip is either a, an arrival to or departure from a site. So those include residents, visitors, deliveries, et cetera. So that's all, that's all factored in. And in this instance, the two and a half per, per bed or whatever it is, that's, that's the anticipated number of trips, including all those visitors, guests, deliveries, et cetera.
Now, I was also curious, this would be my final question. I mean, it would seem to me, the traffic pattern is, is people going to visit the site for whatever reason are going to use Glen Ridge to Jessica and then to Wedgewood to the driveway. That would be my assumption. And I noticed on Jessica, it looks like there's city-installed signs warning that there are deaf children and to please be cautious. Is there a facility serving deaf children on Jessica?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's apparently an answer in the audience, they might be able to bring it up in general.
That's okay, yeah, please.
Where's the parents of the deaf child?
So it's, so it's a one residence with a deaf child?
Right.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Spear?
If I could go back just a little bit regarding the traffic question. I know, thank you for clarifying the calculation or the derivation of the demand. Going back to that demand being about 120, less than 200, the capacity side of that, what was looked at in terms of saying 200 is a good number? How did, how was that derived?
So that, that, sorry. That was what was identified in the, in the traffic impact analysis guidelines that were established, I think, late 2021, that, and then the VMT thresholds that were, that were identified. Those were, we had a discussion item on that a couple of months ago over here. I don't know, I'm not in the traffic engineering division, our traffic engineer is not here, but they, they looked at what the impact is ultimately to the levels of service around town and to the vehicle miles that would be traveled and the impacts on the roads. 200 was that threshold that they determined. I, I unfortunately don't have any background beyond that.
It sounds like 200 is a book number and not a number that someone says, let's look at this particular location, its particular streets, its particular configuration, and let's see if that's applicable at this particular site. Am I right about that? That this is kind of a book, a book number for that kind of a use?
I think you're right with that. If the number is over 200, I think then it would generate some of those other questions that you're having of, you know, what intersections are impacted? And it would then generate a, an actual traffic study where a traffic engineer would, would analyze the trips today, trips per day and then analyze which intersections and kind of distribute those trips over, you know, a day and then look for other, some of those other impacts I think you're, you're asking about.
Okay, so it's sort of a threshold to say, look, if you're below this number, we're pretty good generally. Once you get to this number, let's micro look at this. Let's drill down a little bit.
Correct.
And in, just for our knowledge, how does that number compare to similar uses in other parts of the city where maybe it's not this exact use, but in terms of, of residential building that might have a similar occupancy? Do those have a similar number of 200 or is that different?
I guess that, if I'm understanding your question correctly, is 200 the, the number regardless of use? It is.
It's everywhere, kind of.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that helps. That helps. I had a quick question regarding the, the total square footage exceeds the 20,000. Is 20,000 what's supposed to be the cap for square footage?
I think, well, I guess I can, 20,000 is the minimum lot size. There's not a maximum square footage for the, for the structures on the site other than getting to the floor area ratio limitation or the lot coverage. In this instance, you know, a 30% lot coverage on a four-plus acre site is, is, you know, fairly significant.
A little bit of a follow-up on my colleague's question regarding the appearance. We have a couple, a couple things they're looking for here. One is a, kind of a deviation from the two to one slope ratio and that exceeds a, one and a half to one is a slight deviation. You put a stipulation in that or condition that says, yeah, but have a verification by a licensed soils engineer as a requirement. For the, exceeding the slope grade, well, there's the five-foot fill sort of threshold. This is exceeding to 10 feet of fill. Is that 10 feet retained, entirely retained?
Based on the plans that were submitted, yes. Those are all retaining walls along the westerly property line.
That's, okay, so that is, okay, so that portion is retained. There is no site elevation or rendering that would help us get, see what that visual impact looks like, I assume. Is that correct? We only have building elevations?
The sections that were provided for the grading plans, they, they provided sections for the east and the westerly property lines. And these elevations that you see here probably best demonstrate any impacts to surrounding properties.
So the, the west, you're saying is the elevation where they have a 10-foot fill exceeding the five-foot?
That is correct.
And that, you're saying, is represented in one of these sections here?
It would be the top section.
Okay, so there's our, what we have is, it's showing two, the two retaining walls, I guess, right? A front wall and a back wall, the really tall back wall?
That is correct.
That total height is?
We measure it from finished grade. In this case, it would be five feet. 750 is top of wall and 745 is finished grade.
Okay. So that is?
And that'll be, Commissioner Spear, that'll be approximately this area that I'm?
On that side, okay.
Yes.
Okay. That helps. Thank you for that clarification. That's all I have.
Any others? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Flores, for the, for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. The existing home that's up there right now, that is a care facility?
That is correct.
Has the city received any complaints on the operations of that facility?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Other similar facilities, because they're located throughout the city, are there complaints from the neighbors?
are there complaints from the neighbors, whether it's, you know, the residents or emergency vehicles or even deliveries? Is the city receiving complaints on these other uses?
No, we haven't heard anything in, I don't know how long, but it's, yeah, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the oak tree that one of the adjacent homeowners brought to our attention along the east, where is that located exactly as it relates to the property line? I mean, is it right on the property line?
Unfortunately, it, staff, the landscape plans and the site plan didn't properly identify the location of the oak tree, but from an aerial view based on, that we have in our mapping system, it appears to be either straddling the property line or on?
Pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close, and that's why we included that condition.
Okay, are we gonna, so it's tough to see with the grading plan how the grading might actually affect that tree. Are we gonna try and avoid that tree? I mean, is that kind of part of the plan?
I can defer to Mr. Christman, but that is the purpose of the arborist's report.
Yeah, if you look at that area of the plans, the property line, to me, it looks like the oak tree is approximately two feet on the stump of the oak tree is approximately two feet away from that property line. And then at the property line, they're proposing a concrete brow ditch along the edge and then a fill of approximately two feet, oh, thanks, a fill of approximately two feet in that area. So the canopy of the oak tree may extend beyond the property line.
Okay.
If I may interject and just ask to follow up, so assuming that the arborist or whomever would say, listen, you can put fill in here, but not like directly on the root system, et cetera, so that you're not going to harm the tree and therefore there would, by condition, there would be a sort of a area made for that, is that correct?
Right, we would like for the arborist, the expert, to come in, analyze the tree, look at the slope that's proposed and then make a determination on, you know, what grading could and could not happen in that area. If an adjustment needed to be made, looking at the site plan, it looks like, you know, the slope could be pulled into the project a little bit if necessary.
Could I see the condition again? Of course. Okay, it was prior to issuance of grading permit. All right, so that can be analyzed as a part of the grading permit process to make the determination if additional adjustments are needed to the grading plan. Okay.
Correct.
I have questions related to operations, and the question would be, when do employees show up and deliveries? You know, primarily because of the concern of where's the primary access? And then also any conflicts with operations, you know, arrivals and departures from the school?
So I can let the applicant speak more on that, but just for the public and for the commission to know, staff did incorporate a condition based off of, you know, the operational characteristics. I'm assuming at this point, the applicant probably doesn't know necessarily how everything's going to run in terms of deliveries and all of that. But on one of the conditions, we have, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a detailed letter of operations that outline deliveries to the property to service the use. The letter should include, but not be limited to the following, products being delivered, hours of delivery, frequency of deliveries, and other information as determined by the Director of Development Services. The director should have the authority to revise delivery hours or any other delivery hours if it is determined that the proposed hours may cause issues with surrounding residential properties.
Thank you, I wanted to make sure that that was addressed. So that concludes my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner McCarroll? Yeah, mine as well for traffic.
I have a follow-up question for Adam. So you referenced in answering Commissioner Wyler's question about possible history of complaints that we might have received regarding noise or traffic by neighboring properties of other facilities similar to this. How many of these other facilities that are scattered throughout Escondido are actually located in neighborhoods where they're surrounded on all four sides by residential and not in commercial or semi-commercial or on major thoroughfares?
I really couldn't give you an answer on that, I don't know that.
Okay, I appreciate you trying.
Well, I could speak from experience, I'm a hospice volunteer, so I've been to many of these facilities, and I would say that I've probably been to five of them in Escondido alone, and all of them are largely surrounded by residential.
Thank you.
In my experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And that is actually one of the pluses of this type of facilities because it gives the residents a sense of being in a home rather than in an institution. That's sort of the idea. Okay, I'd like to move to applicant. Is there an applicant presentation or simply is it just a follow-up to Mr. Flores's?
I don't believe there's a presentation, but I think they would like to introduce themselves.
Sure.
Good evening, my name is John Berry. I'm the architect, one of the architects on the project from BGI Architecture. I'm here to introduce myself. Our other architect is Brian Berry, and the owner representative is Chuck Thomas. We're here to answer any questions that we hope we can answer for you. This has taken a long time and it's been thoroughly investigated and reviewed by the city planning department and all the other departments, so we appreciate getting this far. And so if you have a question, I can answer it, but if not.
I've got a quick question. In the presentation, Mr. Flores had identified a decorative-type retaining wall. And what are you envisioning at this point?
Well, they've made recommendation with regards to a split-face block, a concrete masonry unit. It could be colored, which more than likely we would probably agree to. If you start to get into a lot more other decorative things like striping and stuff, it's a lot more difficult to maintain, especially on a landscape wall. If it's a building, you've got a general shape to it. But the landscape wall is going to follow the contours of the ground, so.
Okay. You know, I just want to make sure that if this body approves this project, that the retaining wall, especially along Wedgewood, is decorative in nature, whether that's split-face or something else that's acceptable to staff.
Yeah, it would all have to be approved before grading.
Sure, all right, thank you.
And just one question for me, the existing building that is there now, that will continue with X number of beds in it, correct?
That will continue as it exists right now, yes.
So there's no renovations anticipated for that building at this time, anyway?
No, there's no plans to remodel or modify that building.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you know specifically what landscaping is going to be planted on the southern end of the property facing Wedgewood?
I do not, I'm not a landscape architect.
I know, so I just took a shot.
I do know, I do know that in speaking with the landscape architect, he was using a lot of trees. I think we've got a number, I haven't counted them, but there's quite a few trees on the property.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, 72 total, just that we're putting in. So there's a lot of trees and a lot of screening. And the other thing that was alluded to earlier is that we're raising the grade a little bit on the back, so that actually provides some screening from the street and from the houses across the way due to the elevation. So the houses, or not the houses, but the structures, you're going to see less than half of that height when you go down the street.
Thank you very much.
The single-story?
The single-story. The two-story building, actually, Ivan alluded a little bit to that, but we placed that building on the interior part of the site so that the two, one-story buildings actually screen that somewhat, and the height is regulated is in harmony with the height of the retaining, with the slope wall behind it. So it's actually not even going to be seen.
Commissioner McCarroll?
My background is architecture and design, so I can appreciate the design of your buildings. I think they look perfectly in tune with the residential neighborhood, they're, you know, great elevations. My only comment is I really do wish that you had a better visual of the elevation and the grading, because even with my background in design, it's hard for me to imagine, and just to convey that better to the public who is concerned about what's going to be surrounding their property, it would be great to have a better visual of that.
Sure.
For your presentation.
Yeah, I actually would agree with that. My hardest, I had the challenge with trying to visualize the grading aspects, actually, specifically, so.
Yeah, there's a lot going on on that grading plan, even though it's 4.27 acres, the whole property, and it's 2.5, I think, is what we're actually working on, so.
You're moving a lot of dirt.
Moving a lot of dirt, but we got, you know, buildings, we've got landscaping, we've got parking, all the utilities and everything, so there's a whole bunch of information on there. It probably would have been better to have a larger media or sheet for that, but then we start to get into semantics with regards to how well that can be perceived, too, the size of it.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your making yourself available. Okay, I'd like to, any other comments, commissioners? Nope, okay, open it up for public comment. I believe there are a few written comments that need to be read into the record first.
First comment we received was from a Jack Schaffner, who's an Escondido resident, his position is in opposition. Strongly challenge the PHE 200033 PL 220216 exemption. Neighborhood is zoned for single-family residents. The proposed project is to expand the existing single-residential structure with three new structures and a parking lot with 25 stalls. Forty-five new residents and 15 staff will occupy the buildings. The media has reported on the many COVID outbreaks during the recent, apologies, recent outbreaks in nursing facilities. To permit the expansion of this nursing complex in the elderly residential neighborhood appears to be negligent and irresponsible. Neighboring this property, the nearest structure will be 50 feet from my home. My household will be at risk. Additionally, any emergency vehicles to the facility will certainly disturb the quiet serenity of our neighborhood. Leslie, the property owner, has told me on multiple occasions that our existing wall will be extended to Wedgewood below. The extension is not shown or mentioned on the proposed drawings. Our oak tree is not in the drawn or mentioned, it must retain unharmed. I've been told to expect my property value to decrease by 10 to 15%. Can I sue the Escondido planning for negligence for permitting this facility or should my family suffer? That'll be the end of that comment. The second comment we received would be from a Mary Litch, who's an Escondido resident, who is also in opposition of the project. The increase in traffic from the facility of this size is absolutely unacceptable for the quiet residential area. There's already a school on the street which has a set amount of traffic throughout her day. The noise from emergency vehicles at any hour of the day or night will negatively impact our quality of life and degrade our property values. The size of the project does not fit in the residential area. I ask that the city to deny the conditional use permit and listen to the taxpaying citizens instead of always going after the dollar as had been the norm for many years. That was the end of the second comment. And that is all the written comments that were submitted.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have interest in speaking, Mary Litch. And you'll see a timer here, we asked that you folks keep your comments to three minutes, and if you would state your name and where you are from.
My name is Mary, I live down the road, maybe half a mile, right off of Reed Road on the east end. I'm just very concerned about the additional traffic. The numbers that were discussed by the commissioners seem kind of wishy-washy, like it was indefinite. Any additional traffic on the Reed side would just make things that much worse. Again, noise from emergency vehicles, that whole area just has a quiet, kind of semi-rural feel, and we feel that by putting in a facility of that size, there's no way it's not going to negatively impact us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kira Murphy?
Hi, my name is Kira Murphy. I live on Jessica, about, I would say, a block and a half from where the proposed facility is going to be built. This is my first home, and I really appreciate that you noted that we take a lot of pride in our neighborhood. I'm very concerned about what this would do to the quality and the characteristics of our current neighborhood. We don't really have a lot of traffic on a daily basis. I know that you made a point that where does the number 200 as a significant impact come from? I can tell you, I don't think we have 200 trips a day on our street right now. And so the idea that 100 and 120 new trips are going to take place is very concerning, not to mention the type of trips we're talking about. We're talking about commercial vehicles delivering supplies, maintenance vehicles, emergency vehicles. That would certainly change the current characteristics of the neighborhood. I'm also very concerned about the grading aspect of this. There was no discussion of how that might affect the erosion of soil from that site, like the bringing in soil and lifting it up, how is that going to impact the properties that are now below it? That was never mentioned. I just feel like there is a lack of information in order to make an informed decision about the impact that this facility is actually going to have. I don't, am not innately opposed to having a residential care facility in the neighborhood, but I can't really support this one without further knowledge of how it's going to change our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alan Ross?
Hi, my name is Alan Ross. I live on Reed Road, about three doors down from 2525, which is the facility. I'm not innately opposed to this, but I have several concerns that I would want to also hear about in more detail. Obviously, the worst thing is the traffic. We already have three rush hours daily from the middle school, when they come to school, when they get out of school, and when the after-school group of maybe 50, 60 kids gets picked up at 5:30 or 6:00 at night. So that's a problem traffic-wise, as well as our neighborhood has many people that walk. We have young people that walk with their kids, we have people that walk with their dogs, we have elderly people that walk. So the traffic, whether it's on Reed or on Wedgewood, is obviously going to be impactful, probably more during the construction timeline than once it's finished, which would lead me to ask what the construction timeline is. My second major concern is no one's addressed the exterior lighting at night. We already deal with the school, the school's been pretty good about not turning on all their lights all night. They've helped the neighbors with this. I'd really like to know this parking lot, how are the lights going to affect us? Are you going to be able to see stars? We actually can see stars at night, even with the school there, but with a 25-space parking lot, I have no idea how that's going to affect us, the neighbors, the people right beside the facility. My third concern is exterior noise, air conditioning, heating, generators, refrigeration units, and the delivery trucks. So I know you've addressed what the delivery hours may be, we need to know what that is, but for those constants, the noise would be a real factor, especially in this established neighborhood. That's pretty much it for me, other than I would like more information on when construction would begin, if it were approved, and how long it's going to take, what hours they're going to do the construction on, and how much noise and dirt are they going to be moving around? And that's it, thanks.
And the lighting. Thank you very much. David Ruschetta, Ruschetta, apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Hello, David Ruschetta, 2560 Wedgewood Avenue, so I'm the neighbor to the neighbor. So I'm just in opposition, concerned about it fundamentally changing the character of the neighborhood. My parents built our house in 78, went across the street was Looney's Farm, and we watched that property be developed and to. and we watched that property be developed into a, a nice residential area. So I'm not opposed to, to development, but I am concerned about commercial-sized buildings and everything that that would bring into, into our, our relatively quiet neighborhood. And you just mentioned, I was thinking HVAC, the, the noise of that running constantly for, for permanent residents who are always there. Uh, the deliveries, the traffic, I think is a concern. Uh, I've, in my experience, I've never been to a care facility that has adequate parking that doesn't overflow, so I'm concerned about overflow of parking into the streets in front of our houses. Yeah, the, I'm concerned about the, the grading. Uh, you know, 10, 10 feet of that grading exemption is a concern as to, to, right now, we kind of have a, a clear view. Are we going to be looking into, into a bank and into, into a wall? So, so just, I have, I have some serious concerns about it, it changing the, the characteristics of, of a nice neighborhood that we've been, been in for a long time. So please, please consider my opposition.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Ken Smith?
Good evening, I'm Ken Smith. I live at 1080 Jessica. I'm the first house on the right as you come to Jessica. I apologize, this is my first notification of something this magnitude. I got an inkling of a flyer, I think, last year. Maybe my fault for not doing a little due diligence. Um, but this is my first real opportunity to, to look at any of this, to see any of this. So I apologize. I probably would have preferred to put this in writing, give you guys a chance to look at it at a better time. Uh, just some notes that I've made. Listening to discussions about the traffic and the reasonableness. Sir, it seems like you've been to my street. My street is four houses long, just four. So when a car goes by me, I can hear it all the way to the end of the street. Add 120 to 200-plus trucks, et cetera. I'm going to be hearing it all the time. My street is not very long. I, I'm a big fan of downtown Escondido. Unfortunately, half of that is vacant right now, so it's indicative of the economic times, but you can't tell me that there isn't a better location somewhere in the city, nor southeast or west of us, that they couldn't find a better plot of land to do this. I appreciate some of you with your concerns. This is an established neighborhood. I moved in in '09 for the sole purpose of retiring here. I'm retired from law enforcement. This is where I want to stay. I bought a single-story house on a street full of single-story homes, and you can't tell me if I'm going to come out my front door, you're going to see a two-story building. There's nothing to stop me from seeing that. Uh, deliveries. I work on the USS Midway currently. We do deliveries, events. I'm also in charge of parking. All these concerns, I could write 10 pages about all the different things, but I'm concerned delivery trucks. We didn't discuss how big a facility this is. Are we talking Amazon-type trucks? Because that's what we have on our street. I'm guilty, I get Amazon trucks every day. Uh, but are we talking larger-type trucks coming in to make these deliveries? No one's even mentioned that. I don't know how long, how, what size delivery bay is needed for a facility of this size. Uh, no offense to the architect, but the facility looks like a commercial facility. Two doors down from me, my neighbors who sold their house and retired to Hawaii, they got duped and got bought by a couple that turned it into a residential care. No complaints from that yet. Lot of cars out front, a lot, but they're quiet. But they moved in care people. If you want to build a place that looks like houses, build a facility that looks like a house, not a facility. My, my basic thing is whether you go into this or not, you can summarize this entire argument down to one thing. If any of you had this dropped in your neighborhood right now, based on the type we have, would you want that in your neighborhood? We don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ken, uh, sorry, that was Ken, right? Uh, Mr. Harold Peters?
Hello, my name is Harold Peters. I live at 2555 Reed Road, which is right next door to the assisted-living facility that's been there for four or five years now. I can't really recall when they exactly moved in, but, uh, I don't think I could get a better neighbor than what I've had there. They don't party. They don't have barking dogs. They don't shoot off fireworks. They don't speed up and down the driveway. They don't do brodies in the street. They're, uh, for, for, for what I have been able to witness, they're bed-bound, or at least they're inside. They don't even come out to get a, a breath of fresh air. Aside from that, uh, my concern is, along with what our, my neighbors have said, is the traffic. Uh, I, I think that is going to impact Moody and Glen Ridge and Jessica considerably. I live on Reed Road, and the traffic that I'm incurring with the assisted-living that's there is, is, in my estimation, minimal. People don't come to visit old people, uh, that much. And, uh, as far as the emergency facilities and their, their trucks and fire engines, I never, hardly ever hear them. Uh, they turn off their sirens and lights well in advance of getting even on citrus, I think. So I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I do have a, a question. I have, my backyard is enclosed in a six-foot block wall, and I'm at the top of the hill. And when we were developing the drainage system, I, I incorporated drainage through the wall, and now it goes into that property. But it's conduit down the side of my wall, alongside of Jack's wall, the gentleman that left the, uh, written statement for you. And it has worked great. I don't have two swimming pools. I have one swimming pool that I liked swimming, but I don't want two. And it had occurred in previous rainy seasons when my backyard would fill up, and that's when I made the adjustment to get the drainage right on that. So if the architects could look at, at that part of it, I would really appreciate it. The other thing is, I am at the top of the hill, and like you, I'm concerned about the elevations. It didn't give any kind of a, a plot plan as far as how those buildings are going to be set up on there. And is that two-story building going to block my view? I mean, I have a view lot. And all these trees that they're going to plant, I'm fine with trees. I love trees. I have trees. But I don't want trees that are 80 feet tall, and I don't know what the, what the specs are on these trees. Other than that, I have no other, uh, comments to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lily Yates?
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Lily Yates. We live on Reed Road, 2837 Reed Road. Sorry, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. Um, and we bought our home about, almost three years ago, and we bought it because of how quiet it is. Um, and we've been very happy. I'm opposing this just because of the traffic. Um, I've also struggled with Reed Road. I don't know if anybody's addressed Reed Road itself is, it's, I've been in contact with the city with having them repaired because of all the potholes, and my feeling is the extra traffic would cause even more of an issue on the roads. So I'm, you know, my main concern is the traffic in the roads. Sorry, my voice is kind of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James Singler? Or Singlin?
Hi, my name is James Singler. I live at 1011 Jessica Lane, which is my side of the house. Will be right off of Wedgwood, right next to where the facility's going in. And, um, you know, the, um, looking at the flyer that we got, it was almost deceiving of how it was put out for this notification. It looked like it was just a, a piece of junk mail that was coming in the mail. And I think that we should have been notified better than this, the way it is. And since we're directly across the street from where this is going to happen, we're the one that has a deaf child that walks along the street there. And to say that the traffic is going to be horrendous, it will be. The school on Reed Road, um, there's overflow coming from Orange Glen Elementary that comes down the side road, comes down Reed Road to pick up the kids there. Then they come down, um, I forget what the street name is, but then there's the cut-through coming through Wedgwood. So we got cars coming in and out of there all the time. So if you're thinking that there's 120 cars coming down, or traffic, you better multiply that, because that little street right there is a cut-through to go down Wedgwood, Jessica Lane, then down to Glen Ridge to pick up kids at Orange Glen High School. So there's a lot of traffic going on over there. So, and one of the things that, um, you know, one of the, one of the other gentlemen brought up was overflow parking. Wedgwood is going to be the overflow parking. And I know that nothing's going to happen on the front part of the property where this facility is. There's property up there. There's places for people to park up there. I don't think it should be a thoroughfare coming through Wedgwood. It's just going to be terrible with traffic coming through there. It's already bad enough, like the gentleman said, with the schools. And that is a cut-through all the time. And apparently you've been into our neighborhood on Wedgwood. Like I said, that's where it comes through. So I'm opposed to it. I just think that we should, you know, I hope to speak to the gentleman afterwards to see where he's going, what his mindset is on this thing, and how long will it take to do all this stuff? And the dirt, debris, and everything else. And I, I know people who worry about property value. I'm worried about the same thing. I bought a single-story house. This is our second house. This is where we were hoping to retire here. I don't know if that's going to happen now, just because of what's going to happen going through, back and forth through here. So I appreciate you guys considering this. I hope that you really listen to the people that are living in the neighborhood right now and how it's going to affect our lifestyle there right now. And I'm not opposed to, uh, care facilities, and, um, we need them, but I agree with Ken that there could have been a different place for this instead of an established neighborhood that we live in right now. Thank you for, uh, listening to me. Appreciate it.
Is the cut-through you're referring to, is that Moody?
Yeah, so Moody.
It's Moody?
And then they cut down Wedgwood, and a cut-through, because I'm right on the corner of Jessica Lane, and Jack lives across the street from me, and then where they want the care facility is right there.
Okay, I can picture.
So that side street right there is just going to be bogged up with cars, and, but that is a cut-through coming right, right on our corner, right there.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mara Singler?
My name is Tamara Singler, and we live at 1011 Jessica Lane. And we've been there since 2001, when the homes were built, across from the Ruschettes and the Roberts. Wonderful family folk that have been there. Um, we appreciate the neighborhood because it's so calm and quiet. We can hear the baseball games going on at Mountain View. We can hear the football games going on at Orange Glen. And our kids went through Orange Glen, um, Hen Valley, and OG. The traffic at the citrus Glen Ridge is always horrible. So how are these trucks going to get through? It's a stop sign. People blow through that all the time. The traffic on Reed, people trying to drive through there, cutting through, like my husband said. They come from the school, through Moody, Wedgwood, and cut-through our, going that way to get to Glen Ridge. And now we're going to have vehicles coming up Glen Ridge to Jessica turning left. Our son has already been hit once. Our deaf son has already been hit once in that neighborhood because people weren't paying attention. It was a bicyclist that hit him. And I can only imagine what this is going to be like, living on that corner, literally Jessica and Wedgwood, having that facility right there. It's a dear concern for us, and we hope that you consider that. Okay, this is a small neighborhood, four on each side, three behind us, and I think five or six on the next cul-de-sac. It's a small area, and I really urge you to consider other places to place this facility, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. No more? Okay. All right, I'd like to close the public comment period and the public hearing and commissioners.
Hey, we have some, we have some additional.
We do not have any additional speakers. However, we do have some members of the public who would wish to register their position.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Apologies for not catching that. Uh, Cynthia Jess, resident of Escondido, would wish to register their position in opposition. Uh, David Corrigan, another resident of Escondido, would register their position in opposition. Rosa Griffin, a resident of Escondido, would like to register their position in opposition. And finally, Patty Smith, a resident of Escondido, would also like to register their position in opposition. And that is all the public comment.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, so closing the public hearing, opening to commissioners' deliberations over the project.
I would like staff to respond to at least two of the issues that I took note of that were brought up by the neighbors. Could you address the exterior lighting? And could you address the risk of erosion during the grading?
So I'll go first with the exterior lighting. And so the city does have Article 35, which regulates outdoor lighting, so they would be subject to those. Um, and generally, as a part of the building plan permit process, they'll have to submit a photometric plan, and we'll compare that against the Article 35. Um, so there are regulations and standards that they need to comply with to prevent light spillage onto other, other properties.
Would they have input into that?
Have they what?
The neighborhood have input into that, like, for example, how much lighting could be on after a certain hour?
So that, that's not something that we've typically ever seen on any project. Um, the, I guess what I would say and look at is that there is, uh, there's requirements that lighting be turned off or dimmed after certain hours.
Correct.
In addition, in this area, you know, if you look at where the parking lot is, it is kind of, I guess, it, it may have some impact on the neighbors to the west. The neighbors to the east, though, seem to be fairly well screened from it by the, by the parking lot, right? I'm sorry, by the, by the structures there, so. Um, but yeah, the, the light standards, they can be kept to certain heights. They're shielded to deflect or to reflect light away from adjacent property lines. So, um, in, in general, when we see, uh, parking lots in residential areas, uh, for instance, if you have a multifamily developing with an actual parking lot that might be next to a single-family development or a single-family homes, the, the shielding of those lights does a, it, it's really good technology these days that they can utilize to keep the light spill very minimal.
My next question is regarding the erosion.
Yes, for the erosion, um, so part of the submittals that the engineer will give us will be an erosion control plan that will be included in the grading plan and permit before we issue the permit. In addition, uh, we will have, uh, an inspector on-site monitoring the erosion. If, if we, when we do get rain, um, uh, that inspector will be out on-site, inspecting the slopes, making sure that they're, um, stable. Typically, uh, I've seen straw waddles, uh, along the toe of the slope, and then some sort of straw matting, um, on the slope itself once those are completed, which are all, um, you know, standard methods to prevent erosion. Uh, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. A follow-up with staff. I'll reserve my comments until I make sure that you've all had, satisfied with what information is available to you.
So I have a question about outreach to, I guess, the architect and the project team. Did you conduct any sort of conversations with neighbors and public? Is that okay to ask the project person?
Yeah, I'm John Barry. The owners have met with two of the local neighbors to review the project in the beginning, and I know that they're still in conversations with two others, I think, yeah. So, um, that's the extent of it. We gave all of the, um, I think the, uh, addresses and stuff of all of the people within a radius to the city. So, um, that's what we were required to do.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, before we go too much further, because there was a question that came up about HVAC units and noise. Do we know, based on the plans that were submitted, where those units will be and how they will be mitigated for potential noise impacts? And, and, and I didn't want to ask you. I'm kind of asking staff first, but that, that may come your direction.
I, I believe they're rooftop units, correct?
Yeah, they are.
So there'll, there'll be rooftop units?
They're split units.
Split units? So when they're on the rooftop, they're required to be screened?
That is correct, and they are, as a part of the building permit process, they're required to provide cross-sections of the roofline so we can ensure that there's a parapet or there's a screening device for it.
Is there any requirement for them to be semi-enclosed or at least something to help with the noise? Or are you typically finding that the parapet prevents that, you know, that off-site spillage of the noise?
So in, it, it really depends on the design, it's tough to say, you know, this project would or wouldn't, and I think some projects that are rooftop, they've got them kind of in wells, some projects put a parapet around it. There's all, there's a lot of different methods, but we do look at that, and if we have any concerns, we'll request the acoustical information on the, on the units.
Yeah, because there's different HVAC units depending on the size and, and how they're built, and I know that just in dealing with this on other projects, there are, they're starting to make them more and more quiet. At least that's what I've found, but I want to make sure that, that that isn't something that does get addressed as a part of this.
I have another question on the, what was it, construction timeline that one, one individual was very concerned about?
I'll leave that, defer to the applicant for that.
Well, to start construction, we have to get through the building department, we have to get a general contractor, and we have to get the plans completed for the construction documents. So we're looking at probably six to eight months early to begin with that. And then the construction itself, depending on the grading, I'm anticipating anywhere from probably about a year to maybe 15 months.
Thank you.
That's kind of a conservative thing. Can I make one comment?
Sure.
With regards to the parking and traffic, I think one of the things that's being overlooked is the fact that, and it's even in our description, that all of the patients and the residents that live at the property, which would be 45, none of them drive. They are all not allowed to drive, and so if you take that out of it, the amount of traffic, that number from 120 goes way down. And the other thing is that if this was a development of single-family dwellings within 20-acre, not 20-acre, 20,000 square foot units properties, we could have roughly 9.3 residential projects. If you take that and multiply it by 10, which is what the residential is, that's 93 units, or 93 trips a day. And each trip is actually counted twice, going once and leaving once. So the amount of traffic is actually, even though that is an arbitrary number developed by the state or Caltrans, it's not an accurate number based on what the true amount of people that will be visiting that property. Okay?
Okay, thank you. I will also speak to the number of schools, I think there's a, I, I live off of Bear Valley, right near Kit Carson, I'm surrounded by five schools, and so I'm super familiar with this pickup-drop-off incredibly intense traffic. And I, I also would say that whenever I'm visiting these, these facilities around the, the city, I have seen, they're all very quiet, actually, and they're all, and not too much traffic going in and out because of the fact that the residents are usually compromised and there's not a lot of, there aren't as many visitors.
They're not broken, are they?
Right, it's, it's employees and it is deliveries, but there is. Barry?
I just, I, I appreciate that perspective, and as I think about that, and that's also consistent with the current use, is similar to what the, I mean, we're really talking about doing what they're doing but making more of it, right? And we heard from one, one resident that his perspective is that that use is pretty, pretty subdued currently. There's not a, there's not a lot of complaining that goes on, he certainly noted that it was fine. And I think the, the logic behind the idea that these aren't a bunch of drivers that live there is, is sound. My question is, just from perspective, we're talking about staff already goes there, they would be the drivers primarily, I think. What would be the impact in terms of increased staff? Are we talking about increasing the staff by, you know, half, by, I mean, what is?
As far as I know, there, I think it's one staff member per, three or five? Three? Yeah, it's five residents in the property. So if you've got 15, that means I have to have a minimum of three staff. They have to have one medical professional in each one of the buildings at all times. So there's only three, we're already staffing at five, so there should be no need to increase. The only way it would increase is if we increased the, the amount of facilities, beds, rooms, but there's no room left. So there's no way that we can really accommodate a larger staff. And of course, that also comes down to economics as well, so.
Thank you, that's helpful because I think that gives a more accurate perspective for us and for the public to understand what we might anticipate in terms of real traffic impact.
Yeah, the traffic impact, they're not going to be all of a sudden leaving at the same time, deliveries won't come all at the same time, and that can be organized so that it's very minor with regards to, like, the flow of people in and out of a neighborhood, so.
And we're talking about, even with deliveries, already deliveries are made, we're talking about a little bit of an increase on that.
A little bit, yeah. And they're not going to be large semi-trucks, 18-wheelers or anything, they're going to be more local delivery trucks.
Similar to the, the typical Amazon-type truck?
Yeah, like, like an Amazon truck, maybe a little bit bigger, it depends on what they're delivering. Most of the deliveries are going to be probably paper products and food.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
As a quick follow-up, I didn't hear the number of staff that you're anticipating at, at full staff.
We're anticipating five staff members per building, it's three buildings, so that's 15 people.
I got it, that was the part that I missed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
15, in terms of comparison, now you have, or they have, staff-wise?
At, at the facilities that are there now?
Yeah.
You know how many are there?
Yeah.
Two.
So two to 15 is what we're talking, okay.
Yeah, there's, I think, six people in that, so again, that meets the requirement by the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question to you, please?
Yeah, of course.
What, I, I understand with the questions and, and what's been presented and, you know, the thorough job that planning always does when they're dealing with applicants. However, I still think there's enough information missing to be comfortable with approving this project personally. I don't feel that we know enough about the exterior elevation with the grading, I don't think we know enough about the materials being presented for the project that'll be surrounding the neighborhood. When do you anticipate receiving that information? Because I feel like the public needs to also see that before we can potentially vote on what's coming into their neighborhood.
Well, typically, as a part of the building permit process, they would provide more in-depth materials to, you know, what the stucco's going to be, color and all of that. We did provide colored elevations, there are not material call-outs on that. However, we do have, you know, we do have plans that, unfortunately, you can't see here just because of our size limitation on the documents themselves, but we currently do have plans that identify the aluminum grill on the windows, the, the eaves, and, you know, the more detailed architectural features.
And has the public had a chance to look at any of that, the people that are actually living in the neighborhood?
The city does, these plans are located on our major, major development activity list, which anybody can access. In addition to that, the plans are uploaded, and it was actually in the public hearing notice, it was uploaded on the website, so they can actually see all the plans that you're seeing tonight, even with more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, deliberations? I think Commissioner Barber?
I'm very much entrusted in wanting to protect neighborhood character and make sure this project is completely compatible with the existing residents of this neighborhood. I'm not so certain that 20,230 square feet of stucco and 9,514 feet of pavement for parking on 2.4 acres is going to be compatible with what I see existing there now. I, I, I'm sure there are measures that are being pursued to try to do a good job of effectively screening the project. I want to feel 100% confident and comfortable that it will be effective, and I don't know if I'm there yet. A part of compatibility and character that I'm concerned about is the increased traffic volume that is going to result from this project being built at the scale, size of it is planned. The discussion of traffic that just took place did not convince me that there's not going to be an increase in traffic that this neighborhood is familiar with and might not want to adjust to. I've visited the neighborhood three times, I've gone three different hours of the day, and I'm, one resident mentioned when she was speaking that one reason she chose to invest her money for a home here is that it's quiet. And the three times I've visited, let me tell you, it is quiet there, and it's not going to be as quiet with this steady flow of traffic, even though the entire staff is going to be, have their time dispersed throughout the 24-hour period. I don't think these, these neighbors are concerned whether there's going to be traffic congestion. I think they're concerned about whether there's going to be a constant increase in traffic flow throughout the day that they're not accustomed to nor they desire. So I'm not opposed to a facility like this being a residential area, I just not comfortable that this is the project I could accept, I really would prefer a scaled-back project. And if not that, at least more information that I'm not comfortable with yet, so I will not be supporting the application.
Commissioner Spear?
I appreciate my colleague's candor and sharing his thoughts and rationale behind this. I think we owe it to the public and those concerns that have been expressed to share our feelings on the matter before, in this deliberation, I'd like to do so as well. I used to live on Silverado Place at the end of this street, of Reed, and I loved the neighborhood. It was a wonderful part of my life, and so I love this place, and it is a great place. And so my thought, you know, a great question was asked, well, if this was your neighborhood, what would you want to do? I think that's an important question. I think it's also important to balance, you know, sometimes we move into a place and there's nobody else that lives there and we have a really nice thing, and that's great. But we do have to balance those concerns as well. It'd be great if I could live on a street where no one else moved in, but that's unrealistic, nor is it probably fair to the rest of the community, so we have to balance those concerns. So in balancing, I've tried to look at, these concerns have been expressed, which I'm grateful that the people, that you have come to express your concerns, it's wonderful that that happens, and hopefully, your perspective is that this body here is listening to your concerns and trying to make sure that we protect you and everybody's interests in, in the process. So from my perspective, I've considered the traffic situation, and I, I think, in, in my rationale for how I'm looking at this, I say, well, we have a few different ways we can look at this, to try to get our crystal ball on what this is going to be for everybody and whether that's appropriate. One of those is to say, what are the standards that have been put forth by people that have studied this and thought about it, and they're in the know on this, and we have those standards and those have been expressed, and, and, and I think, I appreciate that. We also have then the question of, well, what is that going to mean in terms of this actual community, and, and are those standards going to protect you? And, and I, I really appreciate the gentleman that lives in the neighborhood who, you know, two things, one is, an astute question was, what about other facilities like this that are in the city? Have we had any complaints from those places? Have we had bad experiences in other parts of town that we might find is true here as well? And, and I appreciate at least our visibility into that right now is, not really. We, we don't have a record of that. That's helpful. Even more helpful to me is the gentleman that lives in the neighborhood who says, you know, they're kind of doing this here already, and it's really quiet, these are great neighbors. You could take this use and you could say, well, let's put a bunch of houses on it instead, and what you're going to get is maybe a lot worse than this. You've got quiet people living in a place that aren't driving around and aren't causing problems. So that's a very, I appreciate that comment and perspective as well. That's what I'm taking into account in terms of saying, am I thinking about how the traffic's going to impact these neighbors in this part of Escondido? And I want to be sure you're protected in that and that we're appropriate. That's my perspective on that. I wanted to say, as far as the other concerns that were expressed, I probably don't need to go into all of the rationale, but that was probably my major one, and I think the rest have been addressed to my satisfaction. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Yes. I appreciate the comments that my fellow commissioners have made. Everybody is very thoughtful every time we come here to look at not only how this is going to impact the community at large, but also the effort that staff has gone through to analyze all of these various projects that come throughout the city. So I appreciate that, you know, across the board, not only from you as the public, and it's much appreciated when you come here to express your concerns, because that always helps us expand even more, how does the public view projects as they're coming into their neighborhoods? As such, Commissioner Spear really addressed a lot of the same issues and thought process that I go through. Traffic is, is certainly, you know, one of the big primary issues, and we see that on a lot of different projects. But from my personal experience in having my parents operate one of these facilities, and the number of people that come, the employees, you know, they're, they're coming once or twice a day, nobody visits the elderly, they just don't come, it's a rarity. I've had two grandparents that have been in facilities. Now granted, I went and visited once a month, maybe, and, and that's just the reality of, of a lot of people's world, that they just don't come to visit their elderly relatives. So from a traffic perspective, I, I just don't think the impact is going to be there, and especially if you compare it to eight, nine, single-family homes that could actually be placed upon this site, and multiple buildings, all of them would be two stories, maybe not, 20,000 square feet, if it was me, I'd have a single, single story. But, you know, that's, that's eight more, nine more homes that are in there with nine more different people that have differing capacities to how much they create noise. This sort of use, they're quiet. I've been to them, I've seen them around town, they're pretty quiet. Delivery trucks, my concern, of course, is the delivery trucks, and when those deliveries occur, employees, when they show up, so that those delivery trucks and the employees do not conflict with the pickup and drop-off at the schools. That has to be built into the operations, just so that we're not looking at creating additional traffic impacts when, you know, those impacts are already occurring because of the schools in the general area. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Wyler? Commissioner, yeah, and I, from my perspective, I, I actually, I agree with Commissioner Wyler's comments, but in fact, in terms of my actual support for this project, I would go with, I would also side with Commissioner Macar, who has said very clearly that she doesn't feel she has enough information yet to actually approve this project, given the fact that it's very hard to visualize the grading, the grading situation, as well as the elevations of the, of the, of the structures. If we had a better look at that, I'd have a much better idea of, of whether or not I could support this project, so that's my comment. So, given that, is there a motion?
To deny the application.
I second that.
Roll call.
Chair Barbe?
No, or rather, wait a minute.
You move to deny.
You, you move to deny, yes, to deny.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes, I vote to deny the application.
Commissioner Macar?
Commissioner Macaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
No.
Commissioner Wyler?
No.
The vote is three to two to deny the, oh, no, to deny the project.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you to staff for your presentation and for the applicant and for the public. Thank you so much for coming out. Really appreciate it. Your questions and your thoughts were very much appreciated and clearly heard. So thank you. Okay. We now move to current business, design review for sign permit PL 23-0112. Is this staff presenting?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Melissa DiMarzo. I'm an assistant planner with the City of Escondido. And the first current business item before you tonight is a request for design review to legalize an existing freestanding sign within the downtown specific plan. The project is located in a commercial center on the corner of Broadway and West Washington Avenue. The commercial center is on the north side of West Washington Avenue to the west of Broadway, within the former Stater Brothers Commercial Center, addressed as 601 North Broadway, Suite D. For reference, the front elevation is shown here. The restaurant is located on the corner of the parcel next to an insurance agency. The project address falls within the Center City Urban District of the downtown specific plan, and this district allows for a variety of retail, commercial, and residential uses. An outdoor dining patio design review was approved and is currently in process for building permits, and a freestanding sign was installed as part of this project. The applicant is now requesting to legalize the freestanding sign. For reference, the restaurant currently has two existing permitted wall signs, one on the south elevation and one on the east. The proposed location for the sign is between the existing restaurant suite and the approved outdoor patio along the Washington Avenue front edge. The proposed sign has wood posts, a wood sign face, and is illuminated by neon tubing mounted behind clear polycarbonate letters, and the face and posts have been painted to match the approved outdoor patio. Per the table shown, the downtown specific plan allows for a freestanding sign up to 60 square feet in area and up to 20 feet tall with planning commission approval. The project is categorically exempt from environmental review under SECO Guidelines, Section 15311 for accessory structures, and a notice of exemption has been prepared and will be filed for this project. The proposed signage meets the sign criteria in Article 66 of the Escondido Zoning Code, as well as the requirements of the downtown specific plan for freestanding signage. The design of the signage meets the elements of proper scale, height, and compatibility with the existing commercial center. Staff recommends approval of the proposed freestanding sign.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name again? Melissa. Melissa, thank you very much. Comments, questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Wyler?
I've got a question. And thank you for the presentation. What constitutes, I guess, a freestanding sign, especially in this case? I mean, I drove by. It's kind of attached to the structure. I couldn't tell if it was covered or not, but there was a structure there for the outdoor dining, which I understand they're in building permit review or something for that, because it was temporary in nature. I get the whole reasoning, so I don't want to go into that. But anyway, so what constitutes that as a freestanding sign?
So the way that it was installed, I believe, is separate from the building, so it's not actually attached to the building.
The main building.
Correct.
So it's two poles coming at it.
Right, yeah.
I got it. And you know what? I didn't get out and actually look to see how it was constructed. So it's actually detached even from the...
Correct.
I visited the site, and it looked to me that it was attached to the fencing that surrounds the patio area.
I think it has that visual, but I don't think it's actually.
Yeah. I believe the supports themselves are separate, so I believe there's concrete, and then there's the posts there.
Well, the applicant, I see the applicant is here, so perhaps afterwards she might address this as well.
Yes, please.
I know you're the applicant, because I can read your sweater.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Vanessa, and I'm the owner of Fortuna's Fish and Bar. And I believe it's not a freestanding sign. I know that there's been some back and forth with that, with the design engineer that we have, and he keeps telling me that it's not. It is attached to the building, the freeze, the structure that we have going on for the permit right now. It is attached to the building as well, so, I mean, I don't know too much about it, but I know that it is attached to the building, so it's not freestanding. It's part of our aesthetic as well, you know, so I just hope you guys can approve it. I mean, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and it was just a question, really for clarification, so, you know, these things come about. Just kind of wanted to know how that may have differed, but that's all right. I don't have any other questions.
So perhaps it's simply a definitional issue, that freestanding is not necessarily freestanding in this case?
I think if I may, we have two options. We have a wall sign or a freestanding sign. This is not on the wall of the building, so hence. And, you know, I think we're looking at the design of a sign, whether we call it freestanding sign or not, whatever we wind up calling it, we're looking to the commission to provide a determination on the design and design review for this.
Yeah, I think that designation has to do with the structural support of the sign, whether it has its independent structural support or whether it's supported on a structure. I'm guessing that's what it's, but I think more relevant to that is Adam, your question, or your point, which is, and I was going to ask this, is there any difference in requirements, whether it's attached to the building or freestanding? Does it change anything in terms of requirements?
So by definition, I believe, as we were saying, it's either considered a wall sign or a freestanding. Those are basically the two categories that we have to work with for this commercial property.
And I know you mentioned the 60 square feet and the 20-foot tall were the only criteria that you mentioned in terms of design standards for it. Does that change, or does anything else change, whether it goes to one definition or the other?
For a wall sign, I don't believe a wall sign would require this level of review. It would be more of a staff review if it was considered to be a wall sign.
Discretionary.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right.
If that's true, I would suspect, and I could be totally wrong about this, but I would suspect that the reasoning for that is the discretionary process comes in when you say, "You know, we're going to put this big old sign, and we're going to hang it up here, and it's going to be a big deal. We want discretionary process to review this, because it may be an aesthetic issue. It may be a bigger issue." Whereas if it's a sign on a building, it's probably within the building. It's certainly within the building. It's not going to be this, the large sign over at the auto park that we dealt with, for example, is what I picture when we're talking about a freestanding sign that requires discretionary approval. So I'm guessing from that perspective, if that's accurate, what we're really looking at is something that is falling in, if it had been attached to the building, we wouldn't be talking about it here. Is that accurate?
If it was considered to be a wall sign.
It would be ministerial approval for this?
Right.
If it was attached, and if that's so, then I guess the question is, none of the requirements change, or do they? Do they become less stringent?
Essentially, essentially, you're looking at if it's solid and sound, which our engineering department would make sure of, I'm sure, so I wouldn't...
So I think the reasoning behind this body looking at it is to say, "Does this sign look like something that's going to be really obtrusive or out of order with the neighborhood?" And I would ask, I don't think this looks any, and from my perspective, I don't think it looks any different than any other business sign around. Is that accurate in terms of size, in terms of appearance?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Is there a motion? Do we have to?
I would say freestanding or wall. The sign's not intrusive, and it actually has a nice design. I think it enhances the building, so I, yeah, I would move approval of the application.
A second.
Second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let him second. He did all the talking.
Roll call.
Chair Abbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, approve.
And I'm going to recommend the seafood soup.
The vote is five to zero to approve.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I go there, I go there a lot.
Oh, really? Okay. Design review for sign permit PL 230054. Melissa, are you on deck for this one as well? All right. Good evening again, Commissioners. The second current business item before you tonight is a request for design review for an electronic changeable copy sign for Escondido Adult School in the general commercial zone. The project is located on a commercially zoned property between West Crest Street and the 78 Freeway. The property is addressed as 220 West Crest Street. The commercial building is located on the north side of West Crest Street between Escondido Boulevard and North Broadway. The north elevation faces the eastbound side of the 78 Freeway. The project parcel is within the general commercial zone, and this zone allows for a variety of commercial uses. So the Escondido Adult School currently has 165.74 square feet of signage of a total allowable 300 based on the size of the building. The applicant's requesting to add a 55.22-square-foot electronic changeable copy sign to the north freeway-facing elevation. Electronic changeable signage is allowed for specific uses, including schools. The proposed location for the sign is the north elevation of the existing building. Per Article 66, only one freeway-oriented sign is permitted per business location. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing channel letter wall sign as shown to accommodate the proposed changeable copy sign. The proposed sign is an LED cabinet sign with changeable copy. Per Article 66, the changeable copy sign display must not be shorter than eight seconds in intervals between messages not less than one second. The copy may not travel or appear to do so in any direction, and the proposed sign will require a building permit prior to installation. This project is categorically exempt from environmental review under SECO Guidelines, Section 15311 for accessory structures, and a notice of exemption has been prepared and will be filed for this project. The proposed signage meets the sign criteria in Article 66 of the Escondido Zoning Code and the general commercial designation of the general plan. The design of the signage meets the elements of proper scale, height, and compatibility with the existing commercial building. Staff recommends approval of the proposed freeway-oriented changeable electronic copy sign. Thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Commissioner Spear?
Just so I can understand, the orientation of the sign is to the freeway, correct?
That is correct.
And the, I saw the elevation of the sign. What I don't know is, if you're driving on the freeway, what does it look like? I assume you can see it.
Correct.
I'm just trying to get relative elevation of the sign versus the freeway elevation. You don't have an idea of where, how that's oriented in vertical?
Do you want to put the photo back up real quick? So looking at this, I would assume that that's taken from maybe the slope between the building and the freeway there. I've actually, until we had this application come through, I never noticed this building. But I have seen it now, and I really think that it's intended to draw the attention of people waiting to go through the light, getting onto the freeway, right? Because you're sitting there in the, on the on-ramp waiting, and I think that's where they're looking at grabbing attention from.
That makes sense, because I'm looking at this saying, a 28-inch-high sign, by the time you read those letters, you're not seeing that very far away, I think. It's not a very big sign.
Yeah, you know, I mean, a 28-inch letter or a 28-inch sign isn't small. But yeah, if you're moving, if you're moving, it's, you know, it's going to be a little bit tougher. But when you're on an on-ramp and you're sitting there and you're going, you know, two cars up, and you stop again, two cars up, you've got time that, "Oh, I can spend the eight seconds that that thing's up on the screen looking at it," right? So, yeah, I think that that's the intent, is to catch the attention of those drivers.
That's helpful. So knowing where it's targeted, then I guess the question I ask is, well, is it obnoxious? And what does that look like in terms of, and there are certain requirements that you've well mentioned. Hey, this thing can't blink. It's got to stick around for a little bit. I'm just concerned, what about the brightness? Is this an LED sign? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay. So are there requirements to say, boy, you know, some of these places you drive by, and that thing's, it's lit up? Is there any requirement on terms of, hey, you can't get excessively bright or anything like that?
Melissa, maybe I can give a little bit of input here. While you're looking there, I can say that, you know, they would have to comply with our outdoor lighting ordinance, which does have regulations regarding the amount, the maximum brightness of a sign. There's certain Kelvin scale, I don't know all the technical details.
Whatever it is.
Right. But there is a limitation on the brightness there. Additionally, it would have to be, as we were discussing earlier, I think with the parking lot lighting, it has to be turned off after a certain hour unless the facility's still open, which, you know, it's not. So I don't assume, or I don't believe that they have classes going on at 11:00 at night or before 6:00 in the morning or whatever that is. So, yeah, there are those types of regulations. Additionally, I think if you consider the location and orientation, it isn't facing residential uses unless you go, you know, 800 feet across the freeway beyond that Starbucks parking lot, whatever, in the El Supra, I think it is. So there, it may be on, it may be a little bright, but I don't think it's anything beyond what you've seen on other acceptable signs, right? I mean, yeah, I know... I mean, yeah, I know what you're saying. There's some that you're like, wow, but this isn't Las Vegas.
Good. Well, you addressed it, I appreciate that. The fact is, there's something, we have something to say, look, if they go nuts, there is a standard for it, and then there's a limitation to the time that they're going to blast it as well, so that helps. Thank you.
Okay. Any final questions, comments? No? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the permit.
Seconded. Roll call.
Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approved.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, approve.
The vote is five to zero to approve.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, future agenda items, isn't that part of your city planners?
That's actually the opportunity for the Commissioners to identify any items that they are considering as a discussion items for future.
Commissioner Spear?
Let me refresh my memory here, but I did want to suggest that we consider, let me word this properly, the Building Advisory and Appeals Board. That we, I did review the Planning Commission meetings from, before I was on, quite a while back, and I noticed that there was an item that I think actually sounded like a Building Advisory and Appeals Board issue, held, it was dealt with Planning Commission. So I, we also had a presentation given to the Planning Commission...
Thank you, Melissa.
A while back, that was, kind of addressed the process, and there were some questions that came up regarding the Building Advisory and Appeals Board. When I was asked, or interviewed for the Planning Commission, I happened to be on the Building Advisory and Appeals Board as well, and one of the questions asked me by the current mayor at the time was, how do we get people to take advantage of this board? And that is what I would like to discuss. How is this question a Planning Commission question? I think, I guess I draw it in because I think the Planning Commission has actually dealt with issues that probably didn't pertain to them. So what I'm asking is that we consider just a little bit of that issue of how we might make a recommendation to the City Council. There is something I would like to propose in terms of helping all of those questions, the mayor's question and all of that ambiguity, maybe the misappropriation of issues going to the wrong body, things like that. I would like to maybe just discuss it and see if we can't come together on a recommendation we could put forth to City Council that would help. Does that make any sense?
Commissioner Spear, can I just get you? Because this item wasn't on the agenda for this commission, then we can't have discussion among the Commissioners about the issue right at the moment. So for the purposes of clarity, are you able to kind of state just a little more succinctly what that agenda item, because what staff will do is, whatever you say, here's the agenda item I'd like, staff will put that on the...
What I'm asking is that we, as a body, discuss the issue in a meeting, discuss the issue of recommendations to the Planning Commission regarding the Building Advisory and Appeals process.
Okay. Got, do we have that, Adam? You got that?
I got that, but per our bylaws, we do need a second commission.
Second.
Very good.
I got your back there.
Okay, so I won't deliberate on that because I'm still a little confused, but we'll let that go. Okay. Oral communications? No. So selection of chair and vice chair. All right, so my time is up. So we're going to elect a new chair and vice chair for the coming year. It's a one-year appointment, or one-year, whatever, role, and I'll just, let me just review with you the process. I'm going to ask for nominations. I will confirm that these, those individuals, if there are, have been nominated, I'll read that list of names. Each of those nominated folks can speak briefly to their quality, to their interests and their qualifications, and then I'll call for a vote to, for the chair. We're going to keep it a little bit simpler than last year. Last year was a little bit complicated, and Alex will run the actual voting process according to Adam, which is fine. So I'd like to open up nominations for the chair of the Planning Commission.
By my thoughts are, in both the role of chair and vice chair, I prefer to see a lot of experience take on those roles of running our meetings. And in all respect to my two fellow planning commissioners who were appointed last year, I personally don't feel I have the experience yet to serve in either of those positions. I'd rather see that kind of responsibility go to one of the three more senior Commissioners. And regarding the chairmanship, I think Vice Chair Paul has, when he has taken the role in the chair's absence, I think he's done an excellent job and proved that he's been able to effectively run the meeting. So I would nominate Commissioner Rick Paul for chair.
Okay. Other nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Wyler. And I would, I guess I would say, I have really grown to appreciate how you've handled the role, so thank you. It's been great.
Okay. Actually, as I go through this, I'd like to confirm that those individuals are still, are actually interested, so you have a statement from Rick Paul, you said?
Yeah, I do. I had communicated with him via email prior to this meeting in anticipation that this might come, that this might be something that he might be interested in, and he said, I quote, "If selected, I will endeavor to do my best to run the meetings in a smooth and organized manner, respectful of all participants. If nominated, I would be honored to serve."
Thank you. Commissioner Wyler, are you interested in being nominated?
With all due respect to Commissioner Spear, and of course, my fellow Commissioners here, I too thought you did a fabulous job, Chair Barbe, but no, I'm going to decline.
Okay, so we're, we have Rick Paul as nominated. Any other nominations?
One more.
Okay.
Since he said no. I'd like to nominate you.
And I'm going to decline.
Okay. I'm no good here.
Sorry, battens per zero. Yes, and I, yeah, okay, so we'll have a, any other nominations? Hearing none? Should there be, there be a roll call for chair?
Um, let's see. Chair Barbe, how do you vote?
I vote for Commissioner Paul.
Commissioner Barber?
Commissioner Paul.
Commissioner Spear?
I guess I have a question. We don't have any other nominations.
Right, but we still need to go through them.
Okay. Then I vote yes.
Commissioner Macaro?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so we have a new chair. Congratulations, Rick, in his absence. Woo-hoo! Okay, we will go through the same process for vice chair. Are there any...
Madam Chair, or Madam Former Chair?
Sorry, nominations for vice chair?
I still maintain that I prefer experience in these roles, so that narrows it down to Commissioner Wyler. Bearing any interest in Commissioner Wyler, I would nominate Commissioner Barb to be vice chair.
And I would accept that, so there's me. Commissioner Wyler, do you want to be vice?
No, I will decline, but I would like to nominate Commissioner Spear for vice chair.
Okay. So we have, any other nominations? No. Okay, so would you like to say a few words or no about your interests? Are you interested for one?
I'll say yes.
Okay.
I'll say yes, and with gratitude, thank you for the nomination. I appreciate that. I will say this, I appreciate your comment, although in deference to me, I think anyone on this board could do a good job of filling that role. And I will say that I am, I've shared with people, hey, you know, I didn't know what the Planning Commissioners were going to be like or working with them, maybe a diverse group of people, and I have, since I've gotten to know each one of you and watched you as you've performed your roles, I have a very high degree of appreciation and respect for each of you. And so I don't think we could go wrong, period, with anybody that we select. Having said that, I think I've watched you do such a fine job, and when you weren't here, Commissioner Paul did a great job as well. So I don't think we can go wrong, but having said that, I'd be grateful for an opportunity to help as well. Thank you.
Great. And I'd be very much interested to serve as vice chair, just because I really enjoy the role, and I'd be happy to sit in when Commissioner Paul is not here, so I guess we'll just do the voting thing.
Can I just clarify, just so it's clear when we do the vote? We don't have a motion, yes or no, so you're going to, when you vote, you're going to vote for the Commissioner, for the Commissioner, for vice chair?
Thank you.
Meaning you're going to name the Commissioner that you would like to serve as vice chair?
Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Barbe, how do you vote?
I vote for myself, Kate Barbe.
Commissioner Barber, how do you vote?
I vote for Commissioner Barba.
Commissioner Spear, how do you vote?
I'll vote for me.
Commissioner Macaro, how do you vote?
Uh, Barbe.
And Commissioner Wyler, how do you vote?
Commissioner Spear. No offense.
It's okay, so that was like three to two.
So Commissioner Barbe has received a majority of the votes cast and would serve as the vice chair of the City of Escondido's Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, all. Appreciate it. Appreciate your vote of confidence. It's great. Okay, so given that I'm vice chair, normally at this point, the new chair would take over at this very moment and complete the meeting. However, our new chair is not here right now, so the vice chair kicks in, so here I am. There you go. Very convenient. Where were we in the agenda? There we go. Okay, so we now have that, city planners' report, no, I'm sorry, Planning Commissioners' comments, generally speaking. Okay, I would like to say, I have seen the emails, I have spoken with Yao Don, who has now been vacated of her position by City Council, City Council's vote last, in the last meeting, I believe. And I just want to say for the record that I have, I truly, many of you were not here during her tenure here. She did suffer for some severe medical issues, and she's just a fabulous person, and while she was here, when she was here, early on in my time, anyway, I really appreciated her presence, and I'm really sorry that she had to, she was not able to perform the role over the last year or more. I do believe, though, that it is, it was time to move on and to replace her in this position, so I encourage applications. If you know folks who would be of interest, who would be interested as well as you believe qualified, I'd really encourage folks to get some more applications into the, into City Hall, whoever it goes to. The secretary, probably goes to Adam.
Actually, they go to the city clerks.
They go to, oh, to Zach. Okay. So Zach Beck is the one. So I appreciate that. That's all I have to say, and city planners' report.
Great, thank you, Chair Barbe, or actually, I should say, thank you, Vice Chair Barbe. So just a quick update, we are not going to, like, we are not going to be holding a meeting on the 9th of May, I think it would be. Next meeting will be the 23rd. I don't know exactly yet what we've got slated up for that, but I know there's a couple items that may come forward. Commissioner Spear, I'll reach out to you to discuss the item that you had requested, see what we can do about putting that there. And I also wanted to kind of just build on what Chair Barbe, Vice Chair Barbe said about, and what I heard, I think, from others here, about the work that this commission does. I think I've said it before, but I really do think this is truly the most engaged Planning Commission I've ever seen, and the dialogue you have, the insight that you bring and the thoughtfulness that you put into your deliberations is something that's truly unique in a commission, at least in my 20 years in this field. So I really do appreciate all that work and all that thoughtfulness and energy you put into what you do, so I just felt compelled to say that after hearing some of the, some of the words others have said here. I hope that we can go through the recruitment for a new Commissioner and have someone that comes to join us that is equally as engaged, so.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, it's from the heart. So that's all I got.
Great. Upcoming agenda items, you got it. Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned.